I call the Monday, March 14th, 2022 Public Work Session to order. Could we all please stand for the Pledge of the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal, liberty, and justice for all.
Welcome to those of you that are with us this evening. We appreciate you being here. I would just like to remind everyone that we are live streaming this meeting and that it can be viewed at the Cornwall-Lebanon School District website. We have all nine board members present this evening. And at this point, I will say that Dr. Demensik, because this is a work session, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Schlegel, and welcome to everyone as we begin our March Public Work Session this evening. We have a number of different items that will be presented to the Board of School Directors for consideration, discussion, comments, suggestions. And at the conclusion of the meeting, we will have the opportunity for any guests in attendance, if they wish to have any questions about the items discussed or items on the agenda. Those are our standard protocols for our public work sessions. So as I consider this, that today is March 14th, yesterday was March 13th, and this Wednesday is March 16th. March 13th, two years ago, was the day when schools were closed, two years ago. This is the day when we had a lot of our families and our community and much of our Commonwealth and our country was thrust into this unknown. And there was certainly a lot of fear out there. And as I look back and I consider the events of the past two years, I greatly appreciate the support of this board, our prior board directors, as well as all of our administrators. And I think an interesting point that I know many of you know is that on March 16th, I asked every one of our administrators to be present, along with a couple other people, Bonnie, Amy Wissinger, and they were all here in person. And our goal has been then, as it is now, is to figure out how we are going to serve the students and families of this community. And by day two, we were delivering meals during that week. We were figuring out how to contend with virtual learning. So even before the two weeks had ended, the next week, we were prepared and training our staff. I cannot be more proud of the efforts of all of our administration and all of our teachers and all of our staff, because they have embodied this very idea of service, which I know all of you do as well. So I just thought I'd share that, because as we reflect on the last two years and all the different debates, that's what we're here for, is to serve our students and our families. And I think we've lived to that mission. And as we talk about this tonight, one of the items on our agenda and our comprehensive plan is just that, our mission, vision, and values. And you will see some of that reflected in some of the modifications of that language, this idea of service and partnering with parents and with the community. So thank you again for all of your efforts as board directors, as part of that, too. We have a number of different items, learning loss and enrichment opportunities that will be discussed tonight. These are some of the federally funded programs and grants that we are providing as part of that ESER funding. And we have some things going on just this week. Tomorrow, actually, is the deadline for the Falcon Foundation Grants and Awards. So anybody watching, anybody out there, get those applications in tomorrow. And then we also have kindergarten registration taking place this month in our elementary schools, so we're getting ready to gear up for next year. We do have, like I said, a number of items, so we're going to jump right in. And we will start with Buildings and Grounds. And Mr. Bensing is going to take the Buildings and Grounds items this evening.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Demensik. If you recall, last month, at the February meeting, Gene had no items to present for Buildings and Grounds. Fortunately, you will not be so lucky this evening. We have a couple to move through. So most items discussed were discussed at a high level at the November Public Work Session, so most of this will not be new to you. And I'll call out the thing that is new. So for the 2021-2022 Projects Update, starting at Cornwall Elementary, we're looking at carpet replacement in the primary wing. So if you were to enter the building and turn left before you go into the gym, it's the first couple of classrooms in that hallway. The budget amount was $10,000, and based off the quotes we received so far, it's looking like it'll be closer to the $10,000 mark as opposed to the $15,000. So for Board Action, we're looking at approval of a quote either at next week's meeting or at the April meeting. The next project is at Cedar Crest High School. It's for the domestic hot water tank and generator project. Reviewing the total scope of the work at this point, at this point, we're looking to replace the large tank with several smaller tanks to build redundancy. Right now, if the large tank goes out, we have no hot water, but with several smaller tanks, if one were to go out, hot water could still be provided. At this point, the estimated total is $25,000, and the generator is being pushed to the campus renovation project, since there aren't any issues right now. So for Board Action, we're looking to approve more engineering as engineer for the project and authorize District Business Office to advertise for bids if needed. We have several partial roofing projects. This is an ongoing theme of the past several years to replace the sections that are most in need. In this cycle, we're looking at Cedar Crest High School, Cedar Crest Middle School, Ebenezer Elementary School, and these would all be Co-Stars projects for an estimated total cost of $380,000. For Board Action, we're looking to approve Beers &amp; Hoffman as the architect and approve a contract with Gable &amp; Son Construction to do the actual work. And then we have several pictures here, starting at Ebenezer. You can see it's most of the black area of the roof, the several small sections on the right-hand side that aren't in red. Those were replaced previously, which is why they're excluded. But this is all original roofing from when the project was completed in 1995, 1996.
Yes, the new Ebenezer is over a quarter century old now, so it's now time to replace some of those roofs. Isn't that something? That's right. That's our new elementary school.
At Cedar Crest High School, you can see it's just the small section above the main office area. And then at Cedar Crest Middle School, you can see it's several areas scattered throughout the building. After these areas are addressed, the summer, the only remaining areas that haven't been touched in a while would be the auxiliary gym in the upper left-hand corner near the track and the cafeteria area. Those were last done during the campus renovation project back in 1995, 1996.
Mr. Bensing, we're hiring or we have contracted Beers &amp; Hoffman. Are they doing a redesign of something?
No, I'm not quite sure on exactly what they're involved with, but I-
Okay. I tried to read the contract, and it didn't say anything about making a new design there.
No, I think it's just ensuring that what we're doing is compliant and necessary.
The scope of this project, you want to have them in there to make sure that what we're having put in and installed is meeting the specifications?
Continuing with other projects, we're looking at two schools, Cedar Crest Middle School and Cornwall Elementary, to replace some rooftop air units. It would be two units, just one in each building. Estimated total cost is $16,000. The middle school would be one of the units above the attendance area, the middle school office, and at Cornwall would also be above the office area. Board action would be to approve the quote in March or April. Also at Cornwall Elementary, we're looking at a paving project. Estimated total cost is $67,000. The primary area of concern is the bus ramp, but there's also an alternate to do the minors' parking lot, and this is the parking lot out front of the auditorium. For Board Action, it would be to approve Steckback Engineering as engineer and authorize the District Business Office to advertise for bids. Another project at Cornwall Elementary is to work on the stone wall at the porch or landing area outside the auditorium entrance. Right now, we're reviewing the scope of work for possible phases, depending on what works needed and the cost. Right now, the estimated cost is $35,000, and this is the landing porch area was not part of the 2000-2001 repointing that took care of the other facade. So you can see from 1927, over time, water gets in, freezes, and slowly pushes out the rocks. So we're looking to address that.
So this is one of these areas that, what do you do with it if you don't fix it, right? It's just otherwise, it's going to become dilapidated and just, yeah. So it's, but of course, because it is original to the building, finding the craftsmanship to do this and fix this is going to be a little more challenging than some of the other things that we do. The other ones are kind of easy, roofs, parking lots. This one's just a little bit different, but we do need to fix it. Yep. Any questions about that? Everybody knows, you can tell where that is from the pictures there, right?
I would suggest if you're having difficulty finding masonry contractors for that contact, the site administrator at the Iron Forest. We had a whole bunch of repointing and things done there, and we have excellent people that are bonded by the state, so-
Site administrator at the-
At Cornwall Iron Forest.
At the Cornwall Iron Forest.
Mike Emery, if you want me to, you can just call.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So this is the one project that wasn't discussed in November, and it's a tech upgrade to the HVAC controllers at Cornwall and South Lebanon. The technology is from 2001, 2005, so at this point, it's obsolete and no longer supported. That total cost is around $72,000. Board action would be to approve contract with Siemens for technology upgrades at both Cornwall and South Lebanon to replace those obsolete or dilapidated things. And HVAC controllers are important. They're the brains of the HVAC operations, so they are needed. So based off the projects I just discussed, as of February 1st, the balance in the Capital Reserve Fund was about $2.2 million. When you take out the $570,000 in projects, I just discussed, the technology commitment that we have for replacement devices, plus estimated debt smoothing, technology plan and land lease for next year at $725,000. Available balance by next fall would be $1.9 million, and long-term capital projects right now is about $1.1 million.
So of all these projects that we have here, other than the Siemens control, these are already planned. We did talk about these in November, is that correct, Mr. Bensing?
Yes.
And of course, as you've identified, in the budget, and some of these are also then Capital Reserve projects.
Yes, there's a mixed badge, and I should have called it out originally, but Gene did an awesome job of kind of stamping on each slide if it was Capital Reserve or General Fund.
So obviously, the reason that we're asking for approval here in March is so that we can get these scheduled and get these done over the summer. Are there any questions? That's a lot of different projects that are happening, but we have a lot of infrastructure. Any questions about any of those items? We just hope they all come in underbid, right?
Yeah, that's the goal.
That's the goal.
All right, moving along to maintenance agreements. The first one is preventative maintenance, customer support, data backup and restore, software subscription maintenance with Siemens. It covers four of the six schools. Year one would be effective July 1, 2022. The first year cost is $47,615, and unfortunately, that's a 7% increase over this year, but it would only then be a 3% increase in years two and three. So we'd be asking for Board Action to approve a three-year agreement with Siemens. Moving on to district chillers, this would be preventative maintenance, emergency calls and inspections, covering five of the six schools, the current vendors, Ingenuity, and this would be to renew a one-year agreement for $42,482, and that's a 3% increase over the current agreement. So the Board Action would be to approve the one-year agreement with Ingenuity. Summer maintenance crew, so we've been doing this for a long time now. I can say that I was a beneficiary of it way back, half a lifetime ago, in 2006 through 2011, so I could see firsthand the value of the program. So we're asking for your approval to continue that for five staff for 10 weeks. Estimated cost would be $35,000. So the Board Action would be to grant permission to employ summer maintenance crew for 2022.
Well, this helps us get all those things done over the summer, some extra hands-on or people are out for vacation, so it's good to have an extra crew there. Okay. Any, a lot of items there under Buildings and Grounds, but a lot of them are fairly routine. Are there any questions about any of those items?
Just a quick one. Do you think we're going to be able to get the carpet from Cornwall?
I think so. We'll see.
I know the guy at Paint Store has been waiting for a year for stuff. It's sitting on a boat somewhere.
Oh, wow. Hopefully ours is on a different boat.
Yeah. Well, that's always the challenge, and we experienced that with some of the projects that we did this past summer. In fact, the very gym right across the way was delayed because a lot of those supply chain, that was an insurance claim, but, so, good point. Okay. We're on to Community Relations, Curriculum, and Staff Development. And the first part of this, we have a number of items in here, is an update on our comprehensive plan. And what you see here is this is the portal that comprehensive planning has to be entered into for the Department of Education. It's Future Ready, FRCP, Future Ready Comprehensive Planning Portal. So we have different phases to this where we're at. And last month, we had talked about how we had some meetings with our mission, vision, and values. I know we had a couple of our board directors that participated in that. And Dr. Murray, if you want to go on to the next slide. Oh, we do have the final steering committee listing. We had a couple of individuals who we had invited but were unable to, because of time commitments, participate. And then we also had a couple of small business owners that were able to be part of it. So we're updating that list with some of the community members. So you'll see that in board docs as well. That'll be the final list. Those individuals were able to participate in our steering committee as well as our mission, vision, values meetings, so we just need some final approval on that. If we go to the next slide. So we did have these two meetings. We broke that up into two groups, just to be convenient, on the 28th and March 8th. And we had a fair amount of input in this from the different parents, community members, staff members involved into our mission, vision, values. And we tried to summarize that input and then have provided you with that draft document. So now it's your chance to look at that. And essentially, some of the things we came to was that our mission has not changed, right? That piece has been the same. We debated about some of the wording of it, but essentially, it is the same, empowering students to reach their individual potential. The place where we did make some changes was in our vision statement. We did add a phrase in there about in collaboration with families and the community, because that gets to this whole idea of the partnership that we have, how much we value that, and then also the idea of the word "serve" in there. But that's what we're here for, is to serve our students and serve our community. When you look further down in the educational values, we talked about, we did take one of them out of the mission, vision, and that's about decision-making based on research, sound logic, relevant data, and responsible stewardship. We felt that that was an appropriate way to put that into the shared values, the educational values. That was one of the discussion points. Other themes that are in there are trustful relationships with families and the community, a respectful district culture. We know that that's been really key over the last number, the last two years, is this respect that individuals have showed towards each other. And we did have this idea of cultural intelligence that was put in there, the idea that we're very proud of our staff and how they understand different students' backgrounds. And that's something that we want to maintain. We thought that was a very positive way to put that, but also to emphasize that that's really a key for us, because we have students from so many diverse backgrounds. And it really is a compliment to the work that we've done, too, just recently, with how we've tried to understand those differences. So those are in there, and I certainly welcome, you know, as you reflect on that, any feedback about that. This plan will not be formally adopted until August, am I right?
It'll be submitted in August.
Submitted in August.
We'll do a presentation in the June work session.
Okay. So we'll do the presentation in June, and then we still can have some tweaking after that, but we ought to be pretty final by June then.
It needs to be on the table for 28 days for public review. But June will be almost a final draft that you see, and then we'll put it on the table or we'll put it in a public view.
Okay. So just reflect on that. You know, I think that it is really a major emphasis, like I said, is just that essentially, there's a lot of things that are the same, but what came out from all groups was this idea of this partnership, this collaboration with parents, with the community, as well as this idea of serving the community. No, it was a very positive discussion. Mrs. Diefenbach, Ms. Carpenter, do you have anything to add to that? I know you both participated in that as board directors.
No, you guys did a really good job gathering, from what I heard, the feedback from the 28th and from what we had on the 8th of March.
The discussion was extremely lively, and there was participation from everybody, and it was very respectful and collegial. And my little brain received a lot of new stuff, so it was good.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you both for being there. And then the next phase is that we will have other tasks that need to be completed as part of this, other subcommittees, and I'll let Dr. Robinson speak about that. So members of the steering committee will be involved in some of those other subsets as well.
Yeah, thank you. So just on the left side of that slide, I tried to give you a little snip of what the Future Ready portal looks like, and we finished the Ready section in draft form, so that's why you see all the green check marks. And we're getting ready to go into the Set portion of this, where we have to utilize the Ready portion. The Set, just because I haven't expanded it, it's quite, you know, it's quite extensive. So we're really going to be getting into needs assessments at every building. So five-year needs assessments, working on that local level, and this is where we break the steering team up. So we have 25 individuals. I thought it was very successful in the first portion of this, because we took those 25 individuals in two separate meetings, and now we've really just assimilated all the thoughts, and now we're pushing it for your feedback.
Okay. So please let us know if you do have any additional feedback. It's much appreciated. So the next item that we have on here is our PSSA testing window, and I'll let Dr. Clemmons, or I don't know, are you going to talk about this, Dr. Clemmons?
I think Dr. Robinson's going to jump in. But basically, if you look at the top of the slide, those are the, that's the window for this year's testing, for the 21, 22. We're looking at the assessment for English Language Arts for the PSSAs the week of, starting April 25th to the 29th. And then we go, and that's for grade six, I mean, third through eighth. And then we go into our math, science, and makeups, and that's going to happen on the week of the 2nd through the 13th. It goes over a little bit into the 13th. But that's for our grades six, grades three through eight again. And then down there, you can see those are the testing windows for the Keystone exams, and all this information's being gathered as we speak, you know, through the state DRC and so forth, our databases. And there's been our tech team, our technology gurus, who I call them, have been doing an amazing job in trying to put everything up there, making sure we have everything in order. Dr. Robinson's just going to break out a little bit more for us in regards to the types of questions we're going to see and the different areas and what that looks like.
So just in the enclosure, we wanted to give you a little bit more of a deep dive into the actual tests the kids are taking, kids in grades three to eight, in three different subject areas. Okay, so they're taking an ELA test for three days, or taking a math test for two days, or taking a science test for two days. But what that breakdown shows you is, you know, a couple of things. You know, what types of questions they're going to have. I think it's very important. We try to put a legend at the bottom, so you understood which, you know, which type of question they're provided. But there's also the amount of time that we have to take to do the actual testing. So if you have any questions on that, certainly, you know, see us, and we can answer those specifics.
I don't have any questions, but I would like to thank you for the way that you prepare the kids. My third grader just went through this, and he was, like, I don't know what they said to him, but he was like, "I was specially selected to take this test, and here's my certificate." And he got headphones, and he, yeah, it just made his whole day. He even called his dad and told him.
Right.
So I thank you for making that. And it made me feel, because this is my first year doing the PSSAs with my third grader, it made me feel more like, I mean, I felt better about it, not that it's going to be stressful, because he loved it.
Good.
That's good.
Yeah, we're trying to get our elementary, especially our third graders, you know, to start understanding a little bit of what this may look like and the practice pieces that we're allowed to, you know, share amongst the elementary, because we do take it online at elementary. And so it is a really neat concept for them to get familiar with it. So thank you so very much for sharing.
So with that idea of testing and assessment, we know that there was recently, a week or so ago, a week and a half ago, an article came out from, I think it was Penn Live and some others, and from the Department of Education about learning loss in state assessments overall. And this isn't terribly surprising, right? I mean, let's think about, you know, in March of 2020, schools were closed. That's a lot of learning loss, despite some of our best efforts. And I think our staff has done a remarkable job here, but it still presents its challenges. Last year, we were under a lot of mandates and emergency orders that did change the structure and the way that we do school, and that does impact learning. So that is something that we're looking forward to. How do we address some of that? What supports we put in place? And that really leads us to the next phase of some of the items we have on here. But we're acutely aware of that. And the challenge we have right now is we have this group of students that's moving through that have had this interruption in their education, and it's been challenging, as well as some of the mental health supports, needs that we have to get back in place. I mean, last year, what we had to do, even at the middle school and high school, with the hybrid, right? Very difficult. And it was largely driven by that we could not accommodate our students in our cafeteries. We did not have the space for the emergency orders that we were under. So all those things, then, they do impact learning. So we're going to have to continue to look forward as we address these various issues. So some of the things that you see here that we're going to talk about, these are ESER-funded things that we hope to build in, the learning loss supports, as well as the summer enrichment opportunities. Under the ESER grant, you are required to identify areas that are for learning loss and areas that are for enrichment. And there's certain amounts that you have to. So on the grant that we did just submit, March 1st or 2nd, was that correct, Mr. Bensing?
March 1st.
March 1st? That is now in the state's hands, because they have to submit it to the federal government by the 24th, and then we'll hear back from them. We can make revisions if we have to adjust some of these things, if it changes, but we did have to submit that. So these are things that are included in there, but they would also need approval by the board, so that we can begin the process of engaging in contracts, hiring people, staff, and others to serve in these programs over the next coming months. So the very first one that we have, I'll take this and then I'll turn this over to some other people, is the Communities and Schools, the PA. And there's been some national news about this, because they've had some grants as well. Communities and Schools has been around for a long time, and what they do is they actually have training for staff and in a partnership with United Way. The staff members hired by community in the schools would be funded through the United Way and then half through us, through the ESER funds. These are individuals that will work at two of our schools. We've been awarded two grants, one at Ebenezer and one at Union Canal. So that's pretty exciting. There actually are two of these within the Lebanon City School District right now, at Northwest, and then also at Lebanon Middle School. So I think they're looking to move here into Lebanon County. We're excited about it. It's another opportunity to connect our students with services, connect them with supports that exist outside the school, be that liaison. It's another resource and another service for students, and it's a partnership, because most of the services that our students receive, in many cases, are not necessarily always right in the school environment. It can be elsewhere as well. So there is a contract. We would need approval on that to enter into that, and that would be on for Monday. So that's the first item that I have here. I'll let- I'll let Dr. Robinson, I think you have the summer credit recovery, right?
Yes, sir. So, just an overview of credit recovery, what it is, you know, following the third marking period, which ends early April, we'll start to get an idea of students that are in need of recovering some of those classes they might have not successfully completed. So, this was very successful last year for us, because we did a deeper dive into supporting those students, some of those at-risk students, into the summer programs, just to recover credits, so they wouldn't fall further behind. So, what we're proposing is fairly similar to last year, two different four-week sessions at our middle school and our high school. And again, I want to preface, this is totally a draft, because I have no idea what those numbers look like until after the third marking period, but we expect it to be very similar. You know, this is the first time we ran it last year, and we had a great deal of success, so there weren't a lot of modifications. We're very appreciative of being able to support this, because a lot of this has been unfunded in the past, and a lot of these kids didn't take the courses, thus would fall further behind, and now we're supporting them and trying to stay on track. So, that's really what that is. So, I put an enclosure in there that would basically give you some estimate costs. The content has a cost to it, the staffing has a cost to it, and there's a little bit of transportation in there as well, where we run a bus, a bus similar to like an activity run for the kids during those times.
Any questions?
What I would say, too, is having, you know, having, I'll put a plug in for Mr. Burton in the virtual school, being able to lean on him to do a deep dive into this for summer programming was quite helpful. For me, it takes a big weight off the shoulders, because you're essentially creating an additional school in the summertime, and I think that was a huge benefit for our programming.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Dr. Clemmons?
Yes, next, the other portion that we have in there for our learning loss would be our ELD Summer Camp, and that is really English Language Development. It is a summer camp that we've been doing a couple of years in the past, but it is going to run three weeks, we're hoping to go for three weeks, if we get the students and the staff, you know, again, this is still, you know, pending, you know, what our response is. But we're hoping to develop, you know, the use of English to communicate in social settings, to help our students practice that English skill development, and then also to develop them with socially, culturally, and appropriate ways of interacting with others. And it looks like we're hoping to do it July 11th through the 29th, it's going to run three weeks this year, in the past, we've only held it for two weeks, but we're getting a great response so far from many of our families who are interested, so we're hoping it continues, you know, throughout these months, these weeks in the summer. But it will be held at Union Canal Elementary School again, approximately 50 students. We're looking at the student day being three and a half hours roughly, due to the fact that we do serve breakfast and lunch to them, to try to help with those outreach pieces, but also that interaction is so important, and we are possibly looking at approximately six teachers, and their hours would be approximately four hours a day, we need a secretary and all that, so it's all broken out again for you. If we could do a, if we're looking at possibility of a field trip, we always know that we have the local expo having their fair at that time, and we're hoping that maybe that is something we could take the students over to or something, and try to incorporate the fair along with that social need, and regarding their communication skills and what have you. So, we're excited. We, again, hope that those program, you know, that program will help many of the students who attended last year to continue throughout the summer.
Thank you, Dr. Clemmons.
Absolutely.
We'll move on to summer enrichment opportunities, these are some other programs that we're looking at.
Well, hang on, what about the transportation?
Transportation will be, we're requesting to have it.
Right, I see that, and so that...
That's all been incorporated into that, and we do have funds for those set aside right now, you know, hoping that, depending, you know, how that all pans out, if we have the drivers this summer and the buses, and all those good things, you know. Yes, thank you.
And what we'll try to, what we try to do with transportation is with some of these other activities, is we try to mesh it so that...
Some can get jumped on.
They're all going on, you know, relatively the same time, so you're not, you maximize it, because what happens with summer program transportation is sometimes you can have buses running around that are very empty, so you want to try to get as many people on there. So, we'll, like the Falcon Summer Science Camp, as well as that, those will run concurrently. So, yeah, but thank you, very good point, very good catch, Mrs. Diefenbach. Okay. Any other questions on the learning loss supports? Okay. Dr. Murray's going to talk a little bit about some of the summer enrichment opportunities.
So, continuing with the ESER funds that we're receiving, there's a multitude of silos or buckets that you have to tag each program with, and one of the tags that's out there is summer enrichment activities. So, we put our minds together for this, and we came up with a couple listings of enrichment camps. The first one is a coding enrichment camp, so we're going to play off of the STEM curriculum that's at the middle school, and the mathematics curriculum at the high school. So, this is going to be targeting middle school and high school students, we're going to purchase some equipment to make the coding happen, and then they're going to work through several different languages based upon their skill set. The way that the instructor is planning or putting things together is in hopes that he's going to be able to isolate small groups, do individualized instruction based upon their skill set, and then give them independent projects to work on, and at the end, have a result that they'll be able to showcase at the end of the camp. He's also hoping to bring in some local industry leaders to talk about opportunities that are available in the particular field. So, this particular coding enrichment camp, again, like I said, will be targeting middle school and high school students, lasting about a week, well, it would be lasting a week, and the equipment that's going to be purchased for this, we're also bringing back into the curriculum during the school year, so the equipment's actually going to be used year-round. So, it's going to be in the enrichment camp during school, and then we have plans to sustain this program, a small enrollment fee to cover all of the expenses, it should be very minimal, because we have the equipment, and it continues to run. So, we have a sustainability program in place for it as well. As far as the CCHS Today Youth Media Enrichment Camp, we are all very aware of CCHS Today, that's the morning announcement crew at the high school, they do a phenomenal job with this. So, now, we're going to be bringing that entire curriculum down all the way to the elementary schools. So, fourth, fifth graders on up, we're going to be playing off of the ELA curriculum, along with some of the broadcast and film curriculum, and we're preparing students on public speaking, and also broadcasting in the film industry. So, we have the morning announcements at each school, now we're going to bring them together in unison, so we're actually developing their skill set all the way through with similar technologies, similar public speaking, and they're all working this into the ELA curriculum as well. So, we're really excited for this. This is going to help us with, again, equipment to make this happen at each level. So, every building receives equipment, every building is going to have a similar technique, it's going to kind of catapult them into their morning announcements, broadcasting, and again, we have a sustainability plan in place where this continues to work, the equipment will be used in the summer, the equipment will be used during the school year, and it just continues to be used. Any questions about the coding and the CCHS Today camp? And then I'll turn it over to Dr. Clemmons for the Falcon Summer Science Camp.
Thank you. Yes, we mentioned a little bit about the camp, you know, just being held at similar times, but the Falcon Summer Science Camp is also based on those STEM initiatives. We're looking at just continuing with that theme, because that's an area of strength that we, or an area of growth that we need to strengthen within our elementaries as well. But this would run for one week, it would be the second week when the ELD camp's going to be running. So, it works perfectly with the transportation need, and it's going to be held at Union Canal as well. We would utilize just the, you know, some of the individuals that are there would help, you know, in the morning if children are coming in and everything. It's a pretty neat team event that was occurring last year, and we're just going to try to continue it this year with some of the supports. But the enrichment activity is based on, a few years ago, we received a grant, and we were able to put something together, a science camp, and so, this is going to utilize some of those materials that we had had surrounding the STEM initiatives, but also create new ones, you know, that are out there, the new resources, looking at our science standards that are, you know, being adopted and what have you, or just have been adopted. And so, we're looking at trying to find five classroom teachers for that particular program. There would be no transportation costs, because we already have it built in with the other program. Approximately 30 hours of the camp, that's about five hours a day for our students. There would be about four hours of planning for our teachers, because the before time or after, you know, because we want them to be well-prepared, and also know what they're delivering throughout. Again, would include, you know, some breakfast and lunch, or a snack of some sort, you know, just to make sure we're feeding and doing that outreach, since we have that availability. And approximately, we're looking at some materials for each of the classrooms, some of those consumables that we may need. But, for the most part, everything's pretty well together, we have some things from the past that we've been able to utilize, and, you know, just like Dr. Murray was saying, when we get some of those materials, what's nice is that we can carry it through throughout, you know, our programming in the elementary, but also then throughout the summer, and share that wealth. So, this is something that we're going to try this year, and try to hope that it takes off, and Dr. Bosman pulled it together, and really is looking forward to helping with these details. So, and that would be July, whatever that middle week is, I'm sorry, I just don't have it right here exactly in front of me, but that second week that we have.
Are you using the same secretary?
We would, yes.
Lovely.
And we would have, the secretary would be there the half-day, but we would be fine the other half, you know what I mean? It's only two more hours after the lunch, so we feel it's comparable, yeah.
And along with that, there's a lot here.
Yeah, there is.
That needs to be communicated. So, do you have a plan on how that will roll out to the parents? Is it individual buildings? Is it, how will that all work?
No, it would come out, it would all be held at Union Canal, and we would be putting that out at each of our elementary schools. Yes, yes, we'll be posting for positions and going through all those things, but yes, the parents would be well-aware of what we're looking for.
Through each of the building?
Yeah, no, it would be just, the summer camp would be held at Union Canal.
But the communication would involve...
The communication would be at each building, absolutely.
Newsletters.
Right, that's what I'm trying to get to. How will the parents become aware of that, at each of the individual buildings? And how will that look?
Yes, that's how we, that's how we put out all of the programs when we have it.
Yeah, newsletters, social media, all those other avenues that we normally would use.
Right, right.
Because even though they're held at one building, it's for all of our district students.
Yeah, due to the fact that, you know, the, this is just the general proposal right now, you know, once it's approved, we certainly would get all that in place for that reason, but that is the plan, for each building to put it out, get their students involved. We really want our students involved this summer, if we can keep them, and really motivate them a little bit. And they seem to gravitate towards the topic of these activities, because it's going to be hands-on, they'll be not only reading and doing their math and what have you, but they're going to be doing some hands-on STEM activities, which I think will be exciting.
Good.
Thank you.
All of the, go ahead.
Yes, the other two, the coding camp and the media camp, is that going to be at Union Canal, or is that going to be somewhere else?
Dr. Murray can answer that, some of those will be at different locations.
Yeah, these two camps, the coding enrichment camp and the CCHS Today Youth Media Enrichment Camp are going to be held here at the high school. So, each building has a monthly newsletter that they send out, so we're going to be advertising them in the monthly newsletter. And then the monthly newsletters are also broadcasted through our Skyward Messaging Center, so it grabs all the parents in the targeted areas, and just shoots an email off to them. So, the students will be aware of it via the morning announcements that we, so we get the students very excited, hey, this is a really cool opportunity for enrichment, this is what it entails, if you're interested, please ask your parents about, you know, permission to attend, and then the parents will have all the information via the school newsletters, and also the Skyward messages that were sent out. So, then we're going to kind of target them. The nice thing about keeping here on campus, there's going to be, both of those need a lot of tech support, so if anything were to occur, we can answer to it immediately, whereas if it's over at Union Canal, and the majority of my crew is somewhere else, it takes us a little drive time to get there. So, we didn't want to lose any instruction time. Yep, thank you.
And just one last thing, we always post things on our community bulletin board, too, you know, and with things to try to, and our district website, you know, just in case people look at different places, so we want to really get the word out as much as we can. Yes, I think that was a good question.
Any other questions about any of those items there? Okay. So, all of these items, contracts, programs, we would have online items on the agenda for approval next week, so that then we can begin the process of planning for these. This is March, but we need to get on that in order to have them up and ready to go. Okay? All right. We'll go on next to extracurricular. And we have some use of facilities, this would be Sunday use of facilities, and then overnight trips. Mr. Bensy?
All right, so we have quite a long list for you, but that just shows how our students are getting active again, which is awesome. The first use of facilities is for Dance Station School of Dance, it's for Cedar Crest High School in the auditorium and the band room, they would also need light and sound services, and it would be for Saturday, June 11th, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Next use of facilities is for Elite Baseball, it's to use the baseball fields on Saturdays and Sundays in June and July, Saturdays from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Sundays from noon to 8:00 p.m. for baseball tournaments. Next one is for Lady Falcon Basketball Booster Club, to use Cedar Crest High School Gyms on Sundays, June 19th and 26th, and July 10th and 24th, from 4:30 p.m. to 9:15 p.m. for summer league basketball. Next one is Cedar Crest Football, to use Cedar Crest High School Auditorium on Sunday, April 3rd, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. for kickoff meeting, and then to use the Erbault Stadium Friday through Sunday, June 10th through 12th, Friday and Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and Sunday from 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. for youth camp. Next request is for Cedar Crest Boys Basketball, to use the high school gymnasiums on Sunday, May 15th and 22nd, June 5th and 12th, from 4:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. for youth skills and Lastly, a request from Cedar Crest High School Science Department, to use the high school planetarium on Sunday, March 27th, from 12:30 p.m. to 2:30 p.m. for a planetarium show for the public. And again, all these items would be requesting your board action to approve all use of facilities.
A lot of good things happening there.
All right, so this next item, the first one, would actually be to ask for ratification next week, just because the event is happening tomorrow through Thursday, but I mean, it's great news, we have a high school state qualifying swimmer to Bucknell University, Tuesday through Thursday, March 15th through 17th this week, so we wish him luck. Next one is an overnight field trip for TSA students, this one may sound familiar, because at the November meeting, you did approve this trip, but last time, it was a week earlier, so they've shifted the dates, so now we're asking for the week of Wednesday, April 20th, to Saturday, April 23rd, for a state conference and competition. Next request is for Cedar Crest Boys Basketball, to the U.S. Naval Academy, Friday through Sunday, June 10th through June 12th, 2022, for team camp. And Cedar Crest Cross Country Team, to Twin Grove Campground, Monday through Friday, July 25th through 29th, 2022, for team building camp. Again, it's board action to approve and ratify overnight field trips.
Any questions about any of those items, use of facilities or overnight trips? Any questions about any of those items, use of facilities or overnight trips?
Wonderful to see them all back.
Yes.
All the activities. Right.
A lot of things that do happen in the summer, so it's good to see those things getting back up. Okay, we also have another item that's going to be going on in the summer. That's our summer music program, Dr. Clemmons.
Yes, this is always exciting and this is something that we're excited to have to offer to our students. But elementary band will go from June 16th to the 21st and then our secondary band is the 13th through the 15th of July. And then we have our strings from June 20th to the 23rd. This is an activity that we've been trying to incorporate for many years and it has been very successful and it really does help our students get ready for, you know, all those pieces that they're going to learn for the concerts that are coming up and introducing them to a lot of the social aspect of band. Many do come out and practice and participate and they take those little, like, sort of like a little tutorial lesson and what have you, but when they come together and they do their program, it is really exciting. So that's something that's been on our, you know, that we've been doing every summer and we certainly have those weeks scheduled for that to attend. And they have, you can look in the board docs there and you can see it's all broken out as to what it has been and the hours and so forth. But there's a lot of great instructors and they continue to come back and deliver.
I will give a free bag of Deefenbokchips to anybody who can name the instrument on the far right of that picture.
The far right, is that the bass?
Not kidding.
Is that a bass?
That's a weird one to have on an elementary. Simulator.
No, go, baritone, is the baritone?
It is a contra bassoon.
Oh.
It is the, it costs you about $100,000 to buy one. It is the lowest instrument in the whole orchestra. It plays lower than any other thing. Oh, da, 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 Sorcerer's Apprentice.
Hmm, okay.
I don't think we have one of those here.
No, I don't believe, but...
I don't believe we do.
Interestingly, I know somebody in Lebanon who has one. And if a piece of music comes up...
We could borrow, right?
Yeah, but no, they would come and play it.
Keep it insured.
So I'm eating the chips myself.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Deefenbokch.
Thank you.
And we thought of all of that when we put that graphic on there, right? So yeah, so, yeah, but thank you for bringing it up.
Yes.
Any questions about any of those items under extracurricular? All right, very good. So again, items that will be on for approval for next Monday, the summer band, all the overnight use and the use of facilities. Finance and business. Now, the first item here, this is a routine, we do our fuel supplies. We do this process every year. I just want to clarify that because of the current situation when people think of fuel, but that's not what this is about, though it does impact us. And I'll let Mr. Bensing explain how this process works and what we'll need to do.
All right, so for the past two years, this will be the second year working with KPN, which is the Keystone Purchasing Network. For years, we worked with Providence Energy Consulting and two years ago, they discontinued the program that they were doing for bids. So KPN has done a nice job. Quantities were due in February on the 25th. They will have the bid awards on April 29th. So we'll see what the damage is depending on how rates have fluctuated since last year and then we will ask for your approval in May.
We have to purchase fuel.
The governor's budget proposal summary. So several weeks ago, the governor made his proposal. Once again, he is interested in supporting public education, looking at equalized funding across PA schools. First, the big item is 1.25 billion proposed increase to basic ed funding. As a point of reference, the ultimate agreement between him and the legislature was 200 million for basic ed. So probably not going to get 1.25 billion. Next item was an additional 300 million to most, to the most underfunded districts as part of the Level Up Initiative. Again, last year, the ultimate agreement was 100 million, so again, probably not going to happen. And then 200 million proposed increase to special education funding. Last year, they agreed to 50 million, so again, probably not going to happen.
So many things happening this, when it comes to this. This was the budget proposal that came out earlier. We didn't have a chance to review this at our last work session. Obviously, there was the fair funding lawsuit that's still out there, all these pieces. There's other legislation proposed that just remained to be seen. We will probably learn about what our state funding is after we have to approve our budget in June, as we usually do. It represents a fairly significant part, not the majority, but a fairly significant part. But that's just the way that this process is set up. It makes it very challenging, but that's what we expect, we'll find out about it. So stay tuned.
Also, in the governor's proposal was charter school reform. It would save, based on the numbers that PASBO had, 373 million savings to districts. It would set a statewide cyber charter tuition rate of $9,800 and across the state, they're projecting about $200 million in savings annually. Conform the calculation of special education tuition to align with actual costs, which would be $174 million savings annually. Current tuition for PA school districts range from $8,300 to $36,200. Here at Cornwall, Lebanon, a regular ed student currently costs us $11,279 and a special ed student costs us $25,061 per year. So if this proposal were to come to fruition, we would save about $1,479 per regular ed student. If you take the approximate 88 ADMs that we're estimating next year, that would be about $130,000 savings for regular ed. If you would take the savings for special ed, which would be 15,000 per student, add back in about 5,000 on average in special ed costs times the 39 estimated ADMs, that's $400,000. So you're looking at anywhere between a quarter to a half million dollars in savings for Cornwall, Lebanon, if this would come to fruition.
Well, but that's the entire thing you're referring to there. This is an area where there was a lot of discussion last year about cyber charter reform. I'd be hopeful that at some point, we could finally see something come through that's meaningful here because there's such disparities and such, just total inequities about how this money is distributed. It makes absolutely no sense at all. It's long, long overdue. And we've talked about this for many, many, many years now. So hopefully, we can see that this is an area where they can find agreement. It would be helpful to us and to every school district out there. And it would also meet the constitution as being more thorough and more efficient rather than the way we're currently doing things.
What do we currently pay for cyber school students?
For regular ed, it's $11,279.
Cyber school, that's not for us to educate our own students.
Oh, no.
What do we pay towards cyber school?
You mean for our in-house program?
No, like, if we, we have students going to cyber school.
That's the cost, $11,000 and change, the numbers that Mr. Bensing was talking. That is the cost for outside cyber charter, yeah. And ours are generally, geez, I don't want to put a number on it, but it's at least several thousand dollars lower to do it in-house. We'd have to calculate all of our personnel costs and everything in, but we know that it is at least several thousand dollars lower.
I believe that, I assumed it was that much. I just didn't know that it was $11,000 and here they're saying they're making statewide $9,800.
It's, it's still, it's better than nothing, right? It's a step in the right direction, I think, is the way we look at it, you know?
Absolutely, I think it's at least more fair.
In our, in-house cyber score, outside, there's about, it's been fluctuating, but it's been between about 125 to 140 throughout this year.
Yes.
How many of those?
Okay.
All right, so the next item that the governor proposed was a minimum teacher salary of $45,000 for next year. This would have no effect on Cornwall, Lebanon, because our starting salary next year would be a little more than $53,000. So again, no budgetary impact on that line item. The proposal will not make it through as is, so everything that I just discussed, that's the governor's highball mark and we'll see what the legislature comes back with and I'm sure they'll meet somewhere in the middle. The deadline to approve the budget is June 30th. Again, our budget has to be approved before then, so ultimately, we'll probably have ours adopted before they have theirs adopted, so stay tuned.
So it's a familiar story, you know, some of the same challenges that we've continued to face. And we'll have to just make, when we look forward to, we make, try to make the best guess estimates when we put together our budget and try to find out what way this is heading so that we can make some informed decisions. Thank you, Mr. Bensing. Any questions? Okay, we're on to personnel and I'll take the first one here, administrative. We do have some administrative retirements this year. We've had some changes in personnel that we've discussed at previous board meetings as well. And the one item that we will have on for this coming Monday is the hiring of our middle school principal. Last month, we did announce, or was it two months ago now? I'm losing track of time. We did hire Dr. Rackley as the Director of Curriculum and Instruction. And then for, since she's currently our middle school principal, we had to fill that position. And Mr. Joe Burton will be our middle school principal on for approval this coming Monday. So thank you to some of you who participated in that process. That's much appreciated. And then we also have some other upcoming interviews for our Buildings and Grounds, our Supervisor of Buildings and Grounds position. So that's what I have for administrative personnel. We'll turn this over to Elementary and Secondary.
Okay, you'll also see, we have a retirement. We have Robin Rader, second grade instructor at Cornwall Elementary School, effective at the conclusion of the 21-22 school year. And then we have a leave for Carmen Vasquez. She is a personal care assistant, South Lebanon Elementary School, childbearing leave, effective approximately April 28th, 2022, yeah, 2022. A change in employment status for Jessica Kishba from a primary assistant to the building secretary at Cornwall Elementary School. And we'd look to hire Sabrina Isel. She is a school psychologist, elementary level. Amanda Le Klein, she's a long-term substitute certified nurse, school nurse for South Lebanon Elementary School. Stephanie Teis, instructional assistant, special education, Cornwall Elementary School. And we have Kayla Wolf, who is English Language Arts 3 to 5 curriculum leader. We've been keeping our fingers crossed. And Kayla Reb, another curriculum leader, K to 5. So we're looking to, and we're excited to have those on our agenda.
The following items are on the personnel list for your approval next week to rescind the offer of employment for Crystal Rodriguez, instructional assistant, special education, Cedar Crest High School. We'd ask for your approval of the resignation of Phil Rader, girls tennis coach and assistant boys' middle school coach, effective February 18th, 2022. Jeffrey Porter, high school band technique instructor, effective February 18th, 2022. Bridget Finn, assistant girls soccer coach, effective February 18th, 2022. Eric Carroll, assistant boys' soccer coach, February 22nd, 2022. And Mark Johnson, assistant boys' soccer coach, effective March 4th, 2022. We would ask for your approval of a leave for Ashley Crispin, Spanish instructor, Cedar Crest High School, professional development leave, effective 2022-2023 school year. Ask for your approval of a change in employment status, Terry Moscoli from Entrance Monitor to Guidance Office Secretary, Cedar Crest High School. We would ask for your approval to hire Elena Rosario, instructional assistant, special education, Cedar Crest High School. Rebecca Laser, Entrance Monitor, Cedar Crest High School. Allison Moser, Building Assistant, Cedar Crest High School. And Anna Leonard, Building Assistant, Cedar Crest High School. Will Falk, Assistant Boys Lacrosse, 50%. And Jason Pocatti, Fall Play Stage Manager, Cedar Crest High School.
In the cafeteria, we're going to ask for your approval for the resignation of Nicole Collins Zaring, Cafeteria Helper at the high school, effective February 18th, 2022. And to hire Maria Young, Cafeteria Helper, Cornwall Elementary School, effective February 14th, 2022. In the Buildings and Grounds Department, we're going to ask for your approval to hire Scott Ziegler for district maintenance.
Okay, anything else? Any other questions regarding personnel? We'll let you know if there's anything up. We have some other things that may be happening, of course, but this is what we have for personnel then for next week. Okay, we'll go on to policy and management. First item on here is our emergency operations plan. Dr. Robinson.
Yeah, just reflecting quickly on Act 44 that passed in 2018. There are several aspects to this law, most of which is done in an executive session because it's a safety feature of our school district and emergency planning. But just a high-level overview, we have to develop, it used to be called an all-hazards plan. Now it's an emergency operations plan. And with PIMA guidelines, it has to be reviewed annually. So it'll be, it's enclosed in your board docs and we would ask for your approval next week so then I could submit it to emergency management here locally, consistent with what we have to do by law. There were just some minor adjustments that were made from the previous emergency operations and I have representation from elementary, middle and high school on a committee that we go through along with our law enforcement to review our emergency plan.
Okay. So the next item we have on here is our Lancaster, Lebanon IU 13 Board Membership. And we need to have someone to serve on that board or continue in service on that board. Okay, so we will have you on, Mrs. Deefenbokch, for, to serve. That's a three-year term, right? Okay, thank you. And we have some policies that are on for final adoption. These are three policies that we discussed last month, plan instruction, adoption of plan instruction, adoption of textbooks and resource materials, minor revisions to these. And then we have one policy to place on the table, but it has a lot of attachments. You can tell that this one's from the federal government and has a lot of requirements for purchasing and all these types of things that we have to adopt. Mr. Bensing.
Yes, so just going off what Dr. Dymensik said, is quite the policy. There's four attachments dealing with cash management, administration of federal funds, liability of costs and procurement. And most of the changes are ones that were recommended by PSBA for legal and funding purposes. At the first part, under delegation responsibility, Jean did add a section authorizing her to update the procurement thresholds. If you remember, right before the pandemic, there was a board meeting where she asked for your permission to update the numbers since they change every January 1st and you did grant approval, but this just formalizes that process.
So when they adjust the numbers, we don't have to redo the policy to adjust the numbers every year? Any questions about policies? All right, people services and cafeteria, we've got a couple items here.
So for food service equipment, we're looking to purchase a gas convection oven at the middle school and some milk coolers. These would be under a PA state contract for a total of $27,433. And we would ask for your approval to purchase these items through the general fund. These are all items that were part of last year's budget, so nothing unexpected.
Okay. The chiller and convection oven, got to get those. The last one that we have here is technology and transportation.
All right, so the first item is a district van replacement. That 2017 van that we leased several years ago, the lease expires in April 22. And as part of that lease, there was not an agreement to outright buy the van due to the cost and current supply shortage issues. We're looking at what's best to provide a van and it's looking like we're probably not going to go with another large van due to most of the needs being smaller groups for, groups less than 10 students. It would not only be cheaper, but also more fuel-efficient with current fuel prices. It makes sense, so stay tuned on where we go with this.
Okay.
Buses and van drivers, right now, it's looking... Plus, in van drivers, right now, it's looking like there'd be one driver for Brightville for your approval next week, and five van drivers for your for your approval next week.
Okay, well, that, that does conclude all of our public agenda items for the Board of School Directors. Are there any questions from any members of the board about any of the items that we have discussed this evening? Okay. Are there any, are there any questions from any of our guests in attendance about any of the items that we've talked about this evening? Okay, thank you, Mr. Schlemm.
Well, thank you, everyone, for your thorough reports, and for Mr. Bensing for filling in and doing such a thorough job. Thank you. At this time, I will announce that we will go into executive session for matters of student discipline issues as well as a legal matter. So this time, the agenda is concluded, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Move we adjourn.
Of a motion and a second, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.